Is the mic on?
Testing.
Is there a red light on?
I got it.
Hello?
Good evening. I'd like to call the 2025 reorganization meeting to order. Will the clerk please read the open public meeting statement?
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided as required under chapter 231 Public Law 1975, specifying the time, date, and location by posting a copy of the notice on the municipal building, municipal website providing a copy of the annual notice scheduled to the official newspapers of the borough, and is on file in the clerk's office.
Will everyone please stand for a moment of silence which will be followed by the salute of the flag? I would like to call Pastor Kevin Jackson up, please.
Would you join with me in prayer, please? Bow your heads. Father, we do thank you so much for this opportunity to come together and to swear in Dave Potter and Patricia Payne. Thank you, Father, for your protection over our community. We thank you for this great little town, Milltown. I personally thank you that I've gotten to raise my family here, and it's been such a wonderful experience. I thank you for this meeting, that your hand is upon us, that we are putting our confidence and trust in you in everything that we do. We thank you for wisdom that you will give to the leadership of our town, and we give you glory, honor, and praise for the rest of this meeting in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
Next will be the certification of election.
Statement of determination of the Board of County Canvassers relative to an election held in the county of Middlesex on the fifth day of November in the year 2024 for the election of Borough Council. The said board did determine that at said election Patricia Payne and David Potter were duly elected council members for the borough of Milltown, county of Middlesex, state of New Jersey.
We're going to do the administration of the oaths. We're going to call Councilman Potter up, please. I, David Potter,
David Potter,
do solemnly swear,
Do solemnly swear.
that I will faithfully, impartially,
That I will faithfully, impartially,
and justly perform the duties,
And justly perform the duties,
of the office of councilman,
Of the office of councilman,
to the best of my ability,
To the best of my ability,
and that I will support the Constitution,
And I will support the Constitution,
of the United States,
Of the United States,
and the Constitution of the state of New Jersey,
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey,
and that I will bear true faith and allegiance,
And I will bear true faith and allegiance,
to the same,
To the same,
and to the governments established in the United States,
And to the governments established in the United States,
and in this state,
And in this state,
under the authority of the people,
Under the authority of the people,
so help me God.
So help me God.
I would like to call Ms. Pat Payne up, please.
I, Patricia Payne,
I, Patricia Payne,
do solemnly affirm,
Do solemnly affirm,
that I will faithfully, impartially,
That I will faithfully and impartially,
and justly perform,
And justly perform,
all the duties of office,
All the duties of office,
of councilwoman,
Of councilwoman,
to the best of my ability,
To the best of my ability,
and that I will support the Constitution,
And that I will support the Constitution,
of the United States,
Of the United States,
and the Constitution of the state of New Jersey,
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey,
and that I will bear true faith and allegiance,
And I will bear truth, faith, and allegiance,
to the same,
To the same,
and to the governments established,
And to the governments established,
in the United States,
In the United States,
and in this state,
And in this state,
under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilman Collins,
Here.
Councilman Manko,
Here.
Councilwoman Payne,
Here.
Councilman Poznanski,
Here.
Councilman Potter,
Here.
Councilman Zambrana,
Here.
Mayor Murray,
Present.
Borough Attorney Peter Vignola,
Present.
Borough Engineer Mike McClellan,
Present.
Borough Administrator Frederick Carr,
Present.
Borough Clerk Monica Orlando, present.
Thank you. So I'm going to, I have the mayor's message. I'm going to try to talk slow about this. Pastor Kevin Jackson, council members, borough employees, and professionals, distinguished volunteers, honored guests, ladies and gentlemen, and everyone at home. Good evening and welcome to the 2025 reorganization meeting of the Borough of Milltown Council. I would like to acknowledge a few dignitaries. Senator Pat Dagnan, Assemblyman Robert Karabincheck, County Commissioner Claire... McCloudy. Cloudy. You got it. Cloudy. County Commissioner Charles Kenny, Assemblyman Sterling Stanley, South Rivers Mayor Pete Gindy, and former councilman Richard Revelinsky. I strongly believe that if we choose to work together, united as one, to serve our residents, then together we can overcome every obstacle. I eagerly look forward to working with this council, our residents, our employees, professionals, and volunteers for the better of Milltown. I'm going to touch on a few items and acknowledgements. As we enter 2025, we celebrate the success, the successful completion of several key projects. Notably, the Highland Drive water main replacement and roadway resurfacing project, the Albert Avenue Park improvements, and newly awarded Northbrook Drive improvements set to begin in 2025. Additionally, Main Street has been newly paved, and we have new natural gas lines thanks to PSENG, all in place ahead of the Fourth of July. We also had an entire area around the Little League Field repaved at no cost to the borough. In a significant achievement, the borough was awarded $16,000 grant to provide free swimming lessons to second graders. The council made strides to stabilizing the water rates with the implementation of the automatic increases in the ordinance to remove politics from the billing process. We upgraded our communication system, replacing Nixle with Civic Plus, and made great strides in clearing out our surplus vehicles from the area. The existing DPW yard has been gun cleaning up, and we've taken delivery of backwater DPW trucks, new police cars, and even replaced a fire truck. I urge this council to act swiftly on a battery project that is urgently needed to help mitigate the upcoming increases in transmission upcharges. By investing in this project, we can realize significant savings which should strategically be applied to offset transmission line costs. Additionally, we must assess the electric rate structure and billing, address the flooding issues on Southbrook Drive, and prioritize a demucking of Mill Pond. Looking ahead, we're excited about Phase One of Northbrook Drive repaving and continued improvements of each Foch Drive. Albert Avenue Park improvements are going to be underway alongside with Phase One of water meter replacements, which at no cost to the borough thanks to funding from Water Grant. We must also address the critical water line repair or replacement beneath the New Jersey Turnpike. As we plan for the future, we must remain proactive about the development of Acme, Main Street, Spirits Property. It is important to continue applying for DCA grants and support for both Main Street, to support both Main Street improvements and our local businesses. Additionally, we need to review and refine our specifications, the way our specifications are written and the fees are charged. These charges should be implemented before construction begins. I'm pleased to report that our relationships with police, fire, rescue squad have never been stronger with open lines of communication and a spirit of collaboration. We also foster a strong connection with Superintendent Dr. Stephanie Brown and the Board of Education. Our shared service with South River, thank you, Mr. Gindy, has a well-continued support from East Brunswick and North Brunswick are vital to our success. I would like to extend my thanks to Mayor Pete Gindy, Mayor Brad Cohen, and Mayor Mack for their ongoing partnerships and dedication. I would like to thank each and every member of the Milltown Police Department for their dedication in keeping Milltown a safe community throughout the year. We had a new chief, Chief Christopher Johnson, and under his direction, it was marked by outstanding achievements that reflect the commitment to excellence. Comparing 2023 to 2024, there was a significant increase in performance across key areas. Car stops went from 2,636 in 2023 to 5,395 in '24. Radar runs 935 in 2023 to 1,156 in 2024. Arrests went from 70 to 108. DWI arrests went from four to 18. Finally, I want to extend my congratulations to Officer Michael McCabe for our 2024 Officer of the Year. Michael's outstanding performance and exceptional dedication to duty have been an inspiration to us all. In 2024, Milltown Fire Department responded to 181 calls. I would like to congratulate the following people. Anthony Fama, our new chief; Deputy Chief Tony Karabincheck; Assistant Chief Tom Demansky. I would like to thank former Chief Raymond Jolly Jr. for his service of chief during the years of 2023 and 2024. I would like to also recognize Mr. George Geis as grandpa. He is a 95-year-old man, still active member on almost every call. Milltown Rescue Squad, in 2024, the squad had responded to roughly 1,100 calls. And I would like to congratulate new captain Chris Slover and assistant captain Kyle Rafferty. I would also like to identify that Chris and Kyle are both Eagle Scouts from Milltown Troop 33. I would like to thank former captain Will Kaplan for his leadership in 2024. What do these figures really represent? To many, they seem like they're just numbers, but those of us who rely on emergency services can carry, they carry profound meaning. These dedicated individuals, our first responders, are there for us 24/7, 365 days a year. They put our safety, our lives, our personal property above their own and at great personal sacrifice. Their commitment and their selfishness deserve our deepest gratitude and respect. I am truly thankful for their unwavering service and their sacrifices to make, keep us safe. Borough employees, I would like to extend my heartfelt thanks to all of the borough employees who are truly the heartbeat of our community. In 2024 alone, a total of 3,543 tons of garbage were collected, an impressive feat that reflects the hard work and dedication by our public service teams. While the sanitation department ensures your garbage is collected, our water department works tirelessly to keep the pipes flowing, and our electric department ensures the lights stay on. There is no small task, especially considering the challenges posed by our aging infrastructure, which has not been reinvested in as much and should have been. In addition, our parks remain clean and well-maintained and ready to host both youth and adult activities. Thanks to the ongoing efforts to our dedicated staff, our administrative team, teams continue to keep everything running smoothly and always greeting challenges with a smile. I ask one thing from our residents, please remember that the borough employees who serve you are here to help. They work hard every day to make our town better, and they deserve our respect and understanding. Let's not take our frustrations out or anger out on them, let's support them as they work to make Milltown a great place to live. Milltown seniors, I truly enjoy engaging with our Milltown seniors, and in the coming year, I look forward to continuing our Q&amp;A dialogue sessions at the senior center. These seniors are the building, were the building blocks of our foundations of what Milltown has become today. Their experience, their wisdom, and their contributions have shaped our community, and I am grateful for their opportunity to connect with them, to hear their voices. Together, we will continue to foster a strong sense of community to ensure that Milltown remains a great place for generation, for all generations. Milltown courts, I would like to extend my sincere thanks to the Milltown Borough Judge and her staff for the dedication and hard work. Their workload has been significantly, significantly increased due to the collaboration efforts of the Milltown Police Department. The teamwork between the judge, judge's office, and our police department is truly commendable, and I am grateful for the commitment both have shown in the service, servicing our community efficiently and effectively. Their combined efforts are vital to maintaining order and ensure justice in our, in Milltown. I would like to extend my sincerest thanks to Commander Ron Dixon and the staff at the American Legion for their generosity in allowing the borough to host numerous events throughout the year. Their support and partnership is truly appreciated, and we are grateful for the opportunities that they provide to bring us, to bring our community together. The American Legion's continued collaboration with the borough plays a significant role to make Milltown vibrant, connected place to live. Thank you for everything you do. I would like to thank, I would like to extend my heartfelt thanks to all of our volunteer groups and committees for their tireless efforts making Milltown a better place. Your dedication, passion, commitment in our community are truly invaluable. Whether it's organizing events, supporting local initiatives, or lending a hand whenever needed, you make a meaningful difference every day. Milltown is stronger because of your selfishness and contributions, and we are deeply grateful for everything you do. In closing, I would like to express my sincere gratitude to everyone for their continued support in 2025, just as you have shown in the past year. We are a community that truly looks out for one another, and we pride, we prove time and time again that we will take care of ourselves when we all come together. Well, progress may not always come as quickly as I would like. I remain committed to pushing forward, striving to make Milltown an even better place to live, while keeping costs reasonable for all of us. On behalf of everyone at Borough Hall and the Borough Council, I wish you all happiness, health, and prosperity in 2025. Thank you for your ongoing support and making Milltown such a wonderful place called home. May I have nominations and approval for council president, please?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to nominate Phil Zambrano as council president.
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion made by Councilman Potter, seconded by Councilman Collins. May the clerk, uh, its roll?
We have to see if there's any other nominations.
Is there any other nominations? Yep. Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilman Collins.
Aye.
Councilman Manko.
Aye.
Councilwoman Payne.
Aye.
Councilman Poznanski.
Aye.
Councilman Potter.
Aye.
Councilman Zambrana.
Aye.
Now is the time for public comment. Now is time for public comment limited to the resolutions on the agenda only. If you wish to speak, please step up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Again, this is, the public portion is limited to the comments on the resolutions listed on the agenda at this time. There will be a five-minute time limit set forth by the rules of council. If someone raises their hand, please come up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. No, and I will close, um, public comment. So we have a few consent agendas. So we have consent agenda number one. Consent Resolution 25-01 has been prepared for the resolutions 2025-02 through 2025-20 listed on the agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda have been reviewed by Borough Council and will be enacted on by one motion. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any council member, and if so removed, will be treated as a separate matter. Any items requiring expenditures are supported by certification of funds. If any member of council wants any resolution acted upon individually, please give me the resolution number, and I will pull it from the consent resolution, and that's for 02 through 20.
I, I would like to, but I'd like to know if I can, um, if possible, if I could preface my votes with a statement. I'm, I'm gonna vote, but I'd like to make a statement before to explain my votes.
Say, I guess we could do motion in second, then any discussion.
Make a motion in second, and then we have to.
So I make, I make a motion that the resolutions, uh, 02 through 020 be, be adopted?
I second.
I.
I have a motion made by Council President Zambrana, uh, seconded by Councilman Potter.
I'd like to pull three.
No, you're.
Okay.
Okay, I should have done that before then?
Yeah. Yeah. Councilman Poznanski, you would indicate you just wanted to make a comment on the resolutions. I didn't, I don't know that I need to pull.
What I was going to do is make a statement to basically to explain the reason I was pulling, uh, three resolutions. I'll let it go then.
Okay. I, I apologize. There was some confusion as to logistically what we wanted to do. If you have a comment you'd like to make now on those, you can.
I'll, well, okay, I'll, I'll just, I'll, I'll explain the decisions I was going to make. My decisions for how I vote for our professionals are predicated on what I believe are in the best interest financially for the taxpayers of Milltown. My job is to save residents as much money as possible anywhere I can. That's it.
Okay. Thank you. Seeing no further discussions, will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambrana.
Aye.
Councilman Collins.
Aye.
Councilman Manko.
Aye.
Councilwoman Payne.
Aye.
Councilman Poznanski.
Aye.
Councilman Potter.
Aye.
Consent agenda number two. Consent Resolution 25, uh, 2025-21 has been prepared for the resolutions 2025-22 through 2025-52 listed on the agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda have been reviewed by Borough Council and will be enacted on in one motion. Any items removed from this consent agenda at the request of any council member, and if so removed, can be treated on in a separate manner. Any items requiring expenditures are supported by certificate, certification of funds. Any member of council wants any resolution acted upon individually, please give me the resolution number, and it will be pulled from the consent resolution. Will the clerk please read, please read Consent Agenda Resolution 25-21?
Mr. Mayor, do you want to see if anybody wants to pull any first? That way, when she reads the consent resolution, she can pull out anyone's arm.
Okay. Great. Anybody like to pull any? Here you go.
Whereas pursuant to the rules of council, the council may establish a consent agenda for any regular or special meetings upon certain conditions, and whereas each of the following resolutions to be presented before the Borough Council at its January 6, 2025 reorganization meeting appear to have the unanimous approval of all members of the council, 2025-22 through 2025-52, now therefore be resolved by the Borough Council of the Borough of Milltown, that each of the above listed resolutions be approved and adopted by the Borough Council with the same legal effect as though each was read in its entirety at the January 6, 2025 reorganization meeting and adopted by separate vote.
May I have a motion in a second, please?
Approve the resolutions, uh, 2025-23 through 2025-52?
I second.
I have a motion made by Council President Zambrana and seconded by Councilman Potter. Is there any discussion? Seeing no further discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambrana.
Aye.
Councilman Collins.
Aye.
Councilman Manko.
Aye.
Councilwoman Payne.
Aye.
Councilman Poznanski.
Aye.
Councilman Potter.
Aye.
Consent Agenda Number Three. Consent Resolution 25, 2025-53 has been prepared for the resolutions 2025-54 through 2025-58 listed on the agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda have been reviewed by Borough Council will be enacted on in one motion. Any items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any council member, and if so removed, will be treated, uh, as a separate matter. Any items requiring expenditures are supported by certification of funds. Any member of the council wants any resolution acted upon individually, please give me the resolution number, and I will pull it from the consent resolution. Will the clerk please read Resolution, uh, Consent Agenda Resolution 25-53, 2025-53, please?
Whereas pursuant to the rules of council, the council may establish a consent agenda for any regular or special meeting upon certain conditions, and whereas each of the following resolutions to be presented before the Borough Council at its January 6, 2025 reorganization meeting appear to have the unanimous approval of all members of the Borough Council, 2025-54 through 2025-58, now therefore be resolved by the Borough Council of the Borough of Milltown, that each of the above listed resolutions be approved and adopted by the Borough Council with the same legal effect as though each were read in its entirety at its January 6, 2025 reorganization meeting and adopted by separate vote.
Have a motion in a second, please?
I move that the resolution numbers 2025-54 through 2025-58 be adopted.
Second.
I have a motion made by Council President Zambrana, seconded by Councilman Poznanski. Is there any discussion? No, will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambrana.
Aye.
Councilman Collins.
Aye.
Councilman Manko.
Aye.
Councilwoman Payne.
Aye.
Councilman Poznanski.
Aye.
Councilman Potter.
Aye.
Consent Agenda Number Four. Consent Resolution 2025-59 has been prepared for the resolutions 2025-60 through 2025-64 listed on the agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda have been reviewed by Borough Council will be enacted on in one motion. Any items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any council member, and if so removed, will be treated as a separate matter. Any items requiring expenditures are supported by certification of funds. If any member, what, member of council wants any resolution acted upon individually, please give me the resolution number, and that will be pulled from the consent resolution.
I would, I would like to. Uh, 2025-63? Can I, can I explain why?
We have to.
Right.
Or individual.
May I have a, did you say something?
No, I mean, he has to pull that one from voting for the whole bundle.
Right. Is there, um, may I have a motion in a second for, um, 2025-63? 60 through 64 minus 63?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
So will, will the, thank you.
Second. Second.
Thank you. I have a motion made by Councilman, uh, Council President Zambrana, seconded by Councilman Potter. Is there any discussion?
I'd like to if I may. I had seen that, that there was no one signed up for the senior citizen advisory.
That one, that one we speak on after we vote on these, that we pulled in.
This is everything other than that one you pulled.
I'm jumping the gun, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambrana.
Aye.
Councilman Collins.
Aye.
Councilman Manko.
Aye.
Councilwoman Payne.
Aye.
Councilman Poznanski.
Aye.
Councilman Potter.
Aye.
Will the clerk please read Resolution 2025-63, please?
Resolution 2025-63, appointing members to the Senior Citizen Advisory Committee.
May I have a motion in a second, please?
Motion to.
Second.
I have a motion made by Councilman Collins, seconded by Councilwoman Payne. Is there any discussion?
Uh, I'd, I'd like to, to speak about that. I had seen that no one had signed up, and if possible, um, I'd, I'd like to volunteer, but I've spoken with some people. I have one person that's a definite, a second that's a possible, and a third that's also a possible, so if possible, since there is no one, I'd like to make something of this if I can.
Well, I have, I can give you citizen leadership forms, and you can just have them fill it out, and then if they really are interested, we could appoint them at the next council meeting.
Okay. All right, thank you.
But I'll need to have their forms, and then I'll put it on the next meeting's agenda.
All right. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
That's it.
Okay. Um, will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambrana.
Aye.
Councilman Collins.
Aye.
Councilman Manko.
Aye.
Councilwoman Payne.
Aye.
Councilman Poznanski.
Aye.
Councilman Potter.
Aye.
Consent Agenda Number Five. Consent Resolution 2025-65 has been prepared for resolutions, uh, 2025-66 through 2025-72 listed on the agenda. All matters listed under consent agenda have been reviewed by Borough Council and will be acted upon in one motion. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any council member, and if so removed, will be treated as a separate matter. Any items requiring expenditures are supported by certification of funds. If any member of council wants any resolution acted upon individually, please give me the resolution number, and it will be pulled from the consent resolution. Will the clerk please read Consent Agenda Resolution 2025-65, please?
Whereas pursuant to the rules of council, the council may establish a consent agenda for any regular or special meeting upon certain conditions, and whereas each of the following resolutions to be presented before the Borough Council at its January 6, 2025 reorganization meeting, appear to have the unanimous approval of all members of the Borough Council, 2025-66 through 2025-72, now therefore be resolved by the Borough Council of the Borough of Milltown, that each of the above listed resolutions be approved and adopted by the Borough Council with the same legal effect as though each were read in its entirety at the January 6, 2025 reorganization meeting and adopted by separate vote.
May I have a motion in a second, please?
Motion to accept Resolution 2025-65?
Second.
I have a motion made by Councilman Collins, seconded by Councilwoman Payne. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambrana.
Aye.
Councilman Collins.
Aye.
Councilman Manko.
Aye.
Councilman Manco.
Aye.
Councilwoman Payne.
Aye.
Councilman Poznanski.
Aye.
Councilman Potter.
Aye.
Will the clerk please read Resolution 2025-73 by title?
Creating Borough Working Subcommittee and Chairpersons.
May I have a motion in a second, please?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion made by Council President Zambrana, seconded by Councilman Potter. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambrana.
Aye.
Councilman Collins.
Aye.
Councilman Manco.
Aye.
Councilwoman Payne.
Aye.
Councilman Poznanski.
Aye.
Councilman Potter.
Aye.
Will the clerk please read Resolution 2025-74 by title?
Appointing Council Liaisons.
With pleasure, council, please?
Make motion that this resolution be adopted.
Second.
I have a motion made by Councilman Potter, seconded by Councilman Collins. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambrana.
Aye.
Councilman Collins.
Aye.
Councilman Manco.
Aye.
Councilwoman Payne.
Aye.
Councilman Poznanski.
Aye.
Councilman Potter.
Aye.
Will the clerk please read Resolution 2025-75 by title?
Authorizing the Request for Proposals for Qualified Purchasing Agent.
With pleasure, council?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion made by Councilwoman Payne, seconded by Councilman Collins. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambrana.
Aye.
Councilman Collins.
Aye.
Councilman Manco.
Aye.
Councilwoman Payne.
Aye.
Councilman Poznanski.
Aye.
Councilman Potter.
Aye.
Will the clerk please read Resolution 2025-76 by title?
Accepting the Resignation of Borough Employee Mary Guiney.
With pleasure, council?
I sadly accept this motion, this resolution.
I second. I have a motion made by Councilman Potter, seconded by Council President Zambrana. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to thank Mary for her service and dedication to the borough and she was a fine individual and we're going to really miss her and good luck on your future endeavors, Mary.
I'd like to second that. Mary was, she was an excellent employee and she will be very missed here. I'd like to thank her very much.
Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambrana.
Aye.
Councilman Collins.
Aye.
Councilman Manco.
Aye.
Councilwoman Payne.
Aye.
Councilman Poznanski.
Aye.
Councilman Potter.
Aye.
Will the clerk please read Resolution 2025-77 by title?
Appointing Board of Health Secretary.
With pleasure, council?
I move that this resolution be adopted.
Second.
I have a motion made by Council President Zambrana, seconded by Councilman Potter. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambrana.
Aye.
Councilman Collins.
Aye.
Councilman Manco.
Aye.
Councilwoman Payne.
Aye.
Councilman Poznanski.
Aye.
Councilman Potter.
Aye.
Will the clerk please read Resolution 2025-78 by title?
Accepting the Resignation of Borough Employee Frederick Carr.
With pleasure, council?
I move that this resolution be adopted.
Second.
Second. I have a motion made by Councilman, Council President Zambrana, seconded by Councilman Pozzanski. Is there any discussion?
I'd like to make a comment. I'd like to thank Fred Carr for helping us through a difficult year last year. I'd like to wish you luck in your future endeavors. Thank you very much.
Fred, I second that. Thank you.
I'd like, I'd like to thank you, Fred, personally, that you've done a good job. I know we've batted heads and that's what you're here for and you've answered my questions and I wish I could vote no until you had to stay, but I can't do that, so.
Correct.
He just wouldn't accept it.
That's right, I'm not letting him out of the building. Don't worry.
Thank you, Fred, for your service and thank you for your service to your country. I very appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
And thank you, Fred. It's possible it would be a better place with you.
Hope so.
Seeing no further discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambrana.
Aye.
Councilman Collins.
Aye.
Councilman Manco.
Aye.
Councilwoman Payne.
Aye.
Councilman Poznanski.
Aye.
Councilman Potter.
Aye.
Public portion of the, the public comment portion of our meeting is to allow the public to bring to council's attention their concerns or comments. The council will respect the public's time by refraining from any comments until the speaker is finished. It should be further noted that the public comment portion of our meeting is not structured as a question and answer session. Please state your name and address for the record when you come to the podium. Just a reminder that under the rules of council, individuals wishing to speak during the public input part of the meeting shall be limited to five minutes and may, after others speak, speakers have finished may be allowed to speak for another five-minute period.
Russ Iyebinder, 152 in North Main Street, first one graduation to my friends David and Pat. I'm here actually on behalf of the Milltown Fourth of July Committee. We're having our first fundraiser of the year in about less than two weeks at this point and I just confirmed it because I've been working with the VFW very diligently to make sure they're ready to do things and we're going to have a karaoke night there on January 18th. People, I've had God knows how many people asking me to do that again for our committee, but one of the main reasons we want to do it now too is, for those of you that don't know, Mayor, you talked about the American Legion, unbelievable, we support and work with them, they do so much for the town and Fourth of July and everything else and the VFW has done that in the past as well, but they've had some inner issues, you know, getting things together, some people being sick, they had some problems, you know, with finances and they need a roof very badly in their building. So we are doing everything we can to try and get people in town, businesses and other folks to help get together and help our veterans in this group get back to where they used to be and where they should be because they have a history at our VFW post of really, really helping out not just veterans, but people in need all over the place. We have a really good history there, we want to keep it that way. So the more of you that can come, that's fine, there'll be tickets available in the next few days at Maria's and at Mike's Country Market and Bagel Express and Milltown Convenience and of course me and any other person, but the idea is we're trying to help them and since it's the 100th anniversary of the Fourth of July in Milltown, we want to make it the best one ever and we still want to have the best, you know, VFW and American Legion post ever also. So thank you for your help in advance, hope to see you there.
And Russ, what's the date again?
The 18th.
The 18th and what's the cost?
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you. I didn't have to say that. Good thing you're president, I'm only vice president, that works. Seriously, January 18th, all right, we're going to start at seven o'clock, it's $30, includes the beer and the wine, there'll be finger foods there, our buddy Wayne cooks all that stuff, he's great and like I said, come, you don't have to sing, you can just laugh at other people, it's fine. Come on in now, see you there.
Thank you, Russ.
Seeing no one else from the public, I'd like to close public comment portion of the meeting. Council comments, is there any, anyone on council that has any comments at this time?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just a few, a few things to say. Congratulations to Councilman Potter for returning as a Borough Council member. Welcome to Councilwoman Pat Payne for coming and joining the Borough Council and a heartfelt thanks to all my fellow council members for your support and your faith in naming me your council president. Look forward to working with each of you, both as a team and individually, making sure we take care of all the residents of the borough in 2025. Best thing I could say to everyone here is work through your committees. It's the best way to work to come to an agreement and for a recommendation to the rest of the council and you know, the best advice I can give everyone is communicate, communicate and when all else fails, communicate. Thank you so much.
I'd like to make, I have three small comments. Dubstales into some of the others here. I'd like to also welcome our newest councilperson, Pat Payne. She brings varied experience and attributes. She's an educator, an attorney, and she has integrity, cares about her community and to me most importantly, she's the proud mother of two exceptional sons. With that said, nothing else can top that. So thank you.
Thank you, Gary.
Sure. I'd also like to, this dovetails also into what the mayor had said before, I'd like to recognize one of our Milltown police officers, Mike McCabe, as Officer of the Year. Very well deserved and congratulations to Officer McCabe. All of our police officers are outstanding, from Chief Johnson to our three newest members. We salute you. I would also like to congratulate our new fire chief, Anthony Fama. He is more than capable for this with the leadership role. He has decades of experience and selfless service for his new position. I'd also like to thank outgoing chief, Ray Jolly, for his many years of dedicated service to our community. Please respect the volunteers who work tirelessly day and night when called upon. They are the lifeblood of the community. I would also like to recognize our dedicated rescue squad, they're always ready and able to help our residents in need. The police, though paid, also protect Milltown, putting their lives on the line every day. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to thank Phil Zimbrowner for taking the council president's job and Dave Potter, a friend of mine and fellow councilman and congratulations to Pat Payne on your appointment to the council and I hope you enjoy it. It goes too fast.
Thank you.
You have a better?
I just wanted to say, welcome back, Dave, and Pat, congratulations. And thank you, everyone who helped last year was useful or at least wasn't too rough on me last year. Hopefully, we can do some good things this year. And Mr. Carr, Fred Carr, it's been a pleasure knowing you, sir. Thank you. Thank you for your help with this town. In a tradition, in my own brief tradition of time here, I have been announcing the library events and being as none of the real, nobody else will do it this week, I'm going to do it one last time. Tuesday, January 7th, 21st, 7th and the 21st, there'll be a drop-in play at 10:30 a.m., after-school bingo at 3:00 p.m. on Wednesday, January 8th, Minecraft-themed, Minecraft snowman-themed drop-in at 3:15, please register for that. Thursday, January 9th, movie matinee, Ron's Gone Wrong at 3:00 p.m. Saturday, January 11th, Making Pinecone, Bird Feathers and Stories, please register age four and up. Monday, January 13th, adult yoga at 9:15 a.m., please register for that as well. Tuesday, January 14th, drop-in craft at 11:00 a.m. Tuesday, January 14th, board meeting at 6:30 p.m., open to the public. Thursday, January 16th, craft corner at 3:00 p.m., please register for that as well. Saturday, January 18th, crochet for beginners at 11:00 a.m. And read to a pooch at 12:30 p.m. The library will be closed on Monday, January 20th. They thank you for your support this past year and look forward to doing great things this year. Not exactly sure because it's been a while, but I believe this is the 100 years of the library as well for this year. I know that they, this year, I believe they were looking to do something in the parade as well, in the Fourth of July parade, so they may be looking for volunteers later and ideas, some stuff about that, a little, there'll be more about that, I'm sure, but it's been a pleasure and the library does great things. Thank you very much, Milltown.
I'd like to, I'd like to thank someone here today. I'd like to thank Ralph Tuznowski and his crew with the DPW for, for, today for keeping us from slipping and sliding away. Thank you, Ralph.
I would just like to thank the mayor and the council and all the professionals for a very warm welcome to being on the council. I'm really looking forward to working with everyone. I have a lot to learn and I'm very teachable and again, thank you so much to the citizens and thank you, of course, to my dear friend, Dave Potter. It was a blast campaigning with you and congratulations on your reelection.
Thank you. I am, yes. First, I want to say Happy New Year to everybody. It's been a new year, it's been a great year so far. I'd also like to thank all of our distinguished guests that came to support us this evening, as the mayor mentioned, also to family, friends and residents. I also welcome Councilwoman Payne to the council, we look forward to working with you and I look forward to continuing to work with the mayor and my fellow council members for the benefit of Milltown. Thank you.
If I may, there's just one more comment that I neglected to make. I just wanted to give an honorable mention and a thank you, of course, to Phil for stepping into this role and also that Rich Revolinski did not engage in the public comment portion and I know that that took some...
That'll change.
So I, I think he lost his voice tonight. Thank you.
It is.
I will close council comments, mayor's comments. I did forget and I do apologize, I would like to also, we have a former councilman, it's been a few years, Mr. Richard Ryan, so I do apologize. You were on council a way long time ago, so it slipped my memory as well. My wife and I were honored to attend an event yesterday called Special Kids, K-I-T-D-Z, where we had the pleasure of participating in some of their holiday party. It was a fantastic evening, complete with the appearance from Mr. and Mrs. Claus and the Grinch. I would like to extend my thanks to Mary Ann for the invitation and I look forward to next month's meeting. It was truly a heartwarming experience and I am grateful to be part of such a wonderful event. Lastly, as I mentioned earlier, I will be forming two separate steering committees, one for the South Main Street Firehouse and another for the Schweneman Nature Center. These committees will consist of two members, one from each political party, several members of various groups and a few residents. I will finalize the details and present them at our next council meeting on January 21st, 2025. I'd already had residents reach out to me expressing their interest in being involved. I'm excited to see so many eager people to help move Milltown forward. May I have a motion, entertain the motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
I have a motion made by Councilman Collins, seconded by Councilwoman Payne. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Happy New Year.